And welcome to the West Orange Board of Education Public Board Meeting for today. Monday, August 22, 2022. I would like to thank all of you who are here in person tonight and those watching from home for joining us this evening. I'd like to welcome my fellow board members as well as Dr. Shone and Ms. Flowers. Ms. Flowers, would you kindly take the roll call?
Good evening, everyone. Roll call, please. Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Mr. Stevenson?
Here.
Vice President Rothstein?
Here.
President Tony Cliff?
Here.
Thank you. Notice of meeting, please take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7, 2022. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. In consideration of the closed and public meetings of August 8, 10, 15, and 16 of 2022, do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Any comments? Seeing no comments, Ms. Flowers, would you kindly take the roll call? Mrs. Werter?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Thank you. So tonight, I would like to deviate a little bit from our normal agenda. We did make an announcement this afternoon on social media that was also sent out by email to our district staff members and to families. The West Orange Board of Education is committed to ensuring the continued success of our district as we seek to appoint the next permanent superintendent. In an effort to sustain continuity during a transition in leadership, the West Orange Board of Education has suspended the superintendent search. We are pleased to announce that Dr. Shone has accepted her continued role as our interim superintendent through June 30, 2023. We are also pleased to announce that Mr. Hayden Moore has accepted the position of Assistant Superintendent of Schools. This will be effective as November 1, 2022. The Board intends to appoint Mr. Hayden Moore as the next Superintendent of Schools effective July 1, 2023. Yes. Furthermore, during the next academic year, Dr. Shone will provide leadership and support to Mr. Moore as part of the transition plan. Please know that our district will be advertising for a new principal for our high school starting tomorrow. We will, as always, convene a panel for this interview process. Our delay in appointing Mr. Moore is purposeful. We certainly want him to be part of the process as we transition our high school. Thank you so much for staying the course with us, Dr. Shone. And Mr. Moore, do you have a few comments you'd like to make?
I didn't know if I needed DX. No. Ah. Thank you. Is the immediate comment that comes to me, but thank you for those in the room and thank you to those at home. Um, I really appreciate the community that I live, raise my children in and work. What I appreciate is the energy and the effort and the heartfelt gratitude that you feel for my work in the past, what I have done for you, or maybe even just interacted with you. But let me now tell you something. It's mutual. I grew with you. I went through struggles with my families with you, and you have helped me get through those. So for us to get any further in our trajectory to continue to rise, it's going to take a we. And that's the philosophy in which I have grown up learning here in West Orange with this community, that together we are strong and it takes a we to succeed. And that's the philosophy I walk into as your superintendent and your assistant superintendent. And that's the philosophy that I'll take on with my new team, which I'm proud to be a part of. What kind people to give me an opportunity? What kind people to take a look at me again? I appreciate you all on the board. And of course, Dr. Shone, who I always say, we're turning double plays, I love to use sports references, I'm sorry. But what a terrific, and I'm very lucky to work with such an esteemed superintendent. And I'm lucky that the Board was smart enough and kind enough to let a new superintendent have someone to rely on for a year. And I'm humble enough to understand that it will take me that time to learn how I can best serve this community and make sure that our children, that our staff are always comfortable and will always progress. So thank you so much for this honor you've bestowed upon me.
And without further ado, Dr. Shone, I believe you have a few reports for us.
I do, I do. My sincere congratulations again, Hayden. I know you're busy doing publicity stuff, just just, just wanted to let you know I look forward to working with you. It's gonna be wonderful. If everyone could, just for a moment, I do have another special announcement. So everybody leaves, I'm still gonna make it. I'm gonna wait. I just want to acknowledge. All right, I'd like to announce, if I could, another special, very special announcement for us this evening. On the morning of August 11, the New Jersey School Boards Association, in partnership with the New Jersey Department of Education, formally announced this year's County Teachers of the Year. I'm proud to share that our Redwood Elementary School colleague, Ms. Kristen Dunleavy, has been chosen as the Essex County Teacher of the Year. Of the 23 districts that comprise public education in Essex County, and of the 44 educators who submitted applications, Ms. Dunleavy rose to the top. She is described by her colleagues as selfless and a true advocate for her students and their families, while proudly serving as a special education teacher at Redwood since 2006. The Board will be recognizing and honoring Ms. Kristen Dunleavy on opening day, September 1, in person. I did speak to her and let her know because that's happening is not, is the reason she wasn't invited here this evening. But the Board will recognize her in person on September 1. But how lucky are we? We have Hayden Moore and we have Kristen Dunleavy. And finally, I know that many of you are leaving and are here for Mr. Moore, and I appreciate, thank, thank you. As I, our district leaders will be meeting tomorrow for an all-day leadership convocation. But with that said, I'd like to turn over tonight to our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Ebony de Mendez, as well as Mike Figurito, Arcade at 12, Social Studies Supervisor. We're going to be doing a presentation tonight on the review of our social studies curriculum. So with that said, Ms. Mendez.
Over to your position. You gonna stand the whole time? I'll just wait until.
Good evening. Well, that's gonna be hard to follow. We're going to do social studies. But just, you know, congratulations and excited that Dr. Shone is going to remain with us for the year. And of course, to our colleague, Mr. Moore, we're excited of all that we will accomplish as a team and as a community. And no better person than a West Orange blue, right? Bleeds blue. So today, we're not going to bore you too much. We're going to do social studies. We did have a curriculum review, so Michael Figurito, our supervisor of social studies, he's just going to greet you and then I'll present and then he'll answer the questions. Good? All right.
Good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be here. I'm Mike Figurito, I'm the Social Studies District Supervisor for grades K to 12. I hope you enjoy Ms. de Mendez and myself's presentation tonight.
All right, so this last week, or the last board meeting, we did present on our updates on all of our mandates, our response to our curricular mandates and our health standards. And we did comment that today we would debrief the Board and the public on a curriculum review that was done specifically for social studies. And so here is just a quick curriculum philosophy overview. Of course, the purpose of social studies, its primary is to help our young people make informed decisions, to be good citizens, culturally diverse, democratic society, and really have authentic experiences as they engage in the curriculum. Our social studies department, just like all of our other content areas, updates its curriculum every five years. So every five years, we are required by the NJ DOE to do a curriculum revision, and social studies is no different. They've been busy. They've been working at really making sure that they have aligned their curriculum to the 2020 standards. In 1819, they revised the middle school curriculum to include honors. In 1920, they revised grade six, nine, 10, and 11, again, to include honors. In 2021, the elementary curriculum was revised, and in 2122, grade four. So this is the work that has been done to date in curriculum on our district website. In the curriculum portal, our parents and community can click on each of the curriculum that was revised by the social studies teachers to see what it contains. After Mr. Figurito and I have been discussing, there's so much that has happened over the past few years, not only the alignment to the standards, but all of the mandates, right? So then you saw all of them at our last board meeting, and they directly impact the social studies curriculum. Our district goals around diversity, equity, access, and inclusion. We've been discussing our department goals around assessment because we always have assessment data for ELA and for math, and we need assessment data for social studies. We would like to report out on how the students are progressing toward the social study standards. So with these goals and all of the current events that were taking place in our nation over the past three years, really impacted the way we were thinking about how we were going to engage with our students, engage with them around current events, historical events, and a true narrative of who they are in the community and how they truly are represented. And so then with this, we discussed doing a curriculum review. We wanted to have independent review done, so we asked the New Jersey Council for the Social Studies to come in to look at our curriculum, give us honest, critical feedback about how we're doing in social studies as it relates to all of the items that we mentioned. And so then they conducted that review throughout the year for grades K through 11. Their primary purpose was really to ensure that our curriculum does indeed align to those 2020 standards, to ensure that the learning plan and performance-based assessments really reflect and fully assess the goals and priorities of the standards and that we can report out on how we're doing in social studies, and then evaluate the interaction with the actual students through a comprehensive integration of the mandates. So we presented last board meeting on how we think we're doing with the mandates, but what does the review think about how we're doing with the mandates? And are there greater opportunities for us to really think about diversity, equity, and access in our school? And so then they found strengths district-wide in grades K through 11, our performance-based assessments. They felt that they really represent best practices regarding the content, differentiation, student engagement, student thinking and inquiry. They plotted our civics course. They felt that it allows for continued study of our US history from grade six to seven. They thought about our proficiency, our academic and media literacy standards. They said that our skills and technology skills that were interwoven into the standards were very comprehensive. They talked about our essential questions and the emphasis around a democracy and our political institutions in the US. They said that our learning plan was attainable, our activities and resources really did align to the 2020 standards. The expectations were clearly stated, and our grades four and five connections to Amistad and the Holocaust mandates were present, especially on human rights, and they did give us great commendation there. They also said that our financial literacy standards correlate perfectly with the social studies learning standards and that they are included at the end of each grade. So these were some of the strengths that they identified. And then with that, the findings, and these are the things that we can take as feedback as we work with the curriculum social studies teams to say, how do we even improve even more our social studies curriculum? And so then one of the findings was duplication of standards. And here I really think that this was kind of a contra, right? Because when we had CUSAC come in, they said you have to include all of the standards, right? But then feedback was provided to the state to say, it's impossible. We don't want to do coverage. We want to do depth. We want to go into the curriculum in a more deliberate and profound way. And so then here was the same feedback, and we will take that into consideration as we're moving through curricular revision. A second thing was about the scope and sequence. They felt that there were some units with They felt that there were some units with similar titles. And to be clearer and more transparent for the public, instead of having a unit called Community, and then Community in the Community, right? How do we distinguish it clearly so that the parents know? This unit means this, and this is what will be taught, and this unit means this, and this is what will be taught. They gave us suggestions for moving different units into better places. And with our essential questions, they want a committee of teachers to review them for the vertical and horizontal articulation between them. A fourth finding was the distinction between college preparation and honors courses. And this is a conversation that we've been having in our curriculum meetings, really making sure that our curriculum is distinct and different. This is a college prep course. This is an honors course. So we're going to think about that. And then climate change, and that goes for all of the content areas. The last finding was around the assessments. And so then they asked us, if these are the New Jersey mandates, and you want to make sure that you're implementing them well, create assessments, create a common assessment to see how well you're implementing the mandates into the social studies curriculum. And so then they gave us specific feedback in the different grade spans. An example of the findings by grade span, here, you'll see them from developing a curriculum map in grade two, different point-of-view paragraphs, teaching governance and focusing on West Orange history. They wanted that. That was mentioned often. And then in grades four and five, assessing skills relating to the content and scaffolding research. Examples of findings at the middle school, a curriculum map for grade six, really thinking about US history and American civics as it relates to local and state government in grade six and seven. The application of skills related to civics in grade seven also. And then in grade eight, here are some specific thoughts that they want us to consider regarding reformation, the revolution, capstone research projects, and additional assessments for the honors courses. In grade nine, here, they did make a finding that we really are going to think about as we revise grade nine. They did say that modern world history is predominantly Eurocentric in the first half of the curriculum. And so then they asked us to be more globally inclusive, cultures outside of Europe, curricular units that expand global viewpoints, and consider a curriculum thread or theme like women or global connections. And so then we will work with our teachers to think about those revisions. And then in grade 10, again, the essential questions to really think about the items that are bulleted here. In grades nine through 11, they wanted us to really think about the three research learning standards, scaffold learning to include active citizenship. And in grade 11, some revisions around inquiry, investigation for our sophomore students, our junior students, so that they can make direct connections between what they're learning in world history to the, to real world, to real life. And again, the honors course, and that was a reoccurring theme. So as it relates to the New Jersey curricular mandates, more opportunities. We are integrating all of the mandates. We presented on those at the last board meeting, but how can we do so even better? Again, those district performance-based assessments in K-2, there were areas in grades three to four that they felt we could better integrate, AAPI. Grades four to five, more explicit learning around indigenous peoples, human rights, labor, forced migrations, and conflict. In grade six, AAPI can be integrated more. They gave specific strategies around which eras. And then Amistad and human rights mandates in grade six as well. In world history, thinking about Amistad and human rights as it relates to our assessments. In US history, one, grade 10, thinking about students, individuals with disabilities. And in US history, two, they gave different strategies or thoughts around the inclusion of LGBTQ disabilities and contributions of AAPI. So what are our next steps? We're gonna communicate the findings with the teachers via PLCs, department meetings, grade-level meetings. And then Mr. Figurito is going to convene a social studies curriculum committee with two representatives per grade level, and I'm gonna let him just give you a minute recap of what that's going to look like with this committee.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. DeMendez. The committee is gonna be composed of two teachers per grade level. It's very important that in grades K to five, grades seven and eight, that the teachers come from different schools. So it's not two teachers within the same school. What we're gonna do is, we convene the team of two teachers per grade level. We go through the nuts and bolts of the audit. The audit is several hundred pages in length, which is broken down by grade bands, K-2, 3, 5, 6, 8, and 9 to 11. We go through the revisionary process with the curriculum, and we start implementing some of the revisions. The game plan is, probably, this is not gonna be done in the next full school year, but we're actually looking at, depending on, like, for example, grade nine's gonna take a little bit longer because, as you see with the recommendations, grade eight, they're recommending that grade eight takes on two more units that historically grade nine covers. And they're also recommending a shift in the focus of grade nine. So that's gonna be conversations that I need to have with both the grade nine team and the grade eight team. So we're gonna be looking forward to some of the revisions, going through the audit process, and we have some great work in front of us.
So here is just a quick timeline. So next year, we'll start with grade seven, which will take an entire revision of grade seven based on some of our feedback. In the following year, or for the next two years, we'll look at the scope and sequence for grades three to five. And then in the 2324 school year, we will do the curriculum revision for grade nine. And that's it. We'll take any questions that you might have.
Does the Board have any questions for Mike or Ebony in regard? Gary?
Thank you. First of all, again, thank you so much for the presentation. Hitting some home runs on curriculum, I think, recently, yeah. So my first question was, was this external independent review something that was required? Is it something that we sought out?
We sought it out.
And is that normal for districts? I'm really impressed, and I was just curious about a little background about it.
I'm not sure if it's normal for districts. I said to myself as supervisor, I came here in front of the Board in November 2019 with a vision. And my vision was to diversify our curriculum so all voices can be heard. It was important to me, both as a teacher and as a leader of the social studies department, that all of our children, and they are the most important people in the whole school equation, see themselves in what they are learning. And so we began that task in November 2019. And then COVID hit. But we still kept going forward. And we kept doing the best we can. So I said to myself, okay, a number of mandates have been passed. We are updating our curriculum. But at the same time, if we do an internal audit, it's naturally biased. It is. So why not reach out? What I did first was, I reached through the New Jersey Social Studies Supervisors Association. I said, does anybody have any kind of audit rubrics that they use? The National Council of Social Studies reached out and said, listen, we perform this for school districts. If you'd like to put our feedback. And I said, spoke to Mrs. DeMendez, and I said, that's exactly what I want. I want an outside organization who's a foremost frontrunner in social studies in the state of New Jersey. They come in, take a look at our entire curriculum, and say, listen, this is what's going well, in our opinion. This is where you need to work on. And so that's how we're here today.
I mean, really, I just, I applaud you. I think that this is great. I love the transparency and what it brings to our students. Ms. DeMendez, you educated us on the newer mandates a couple of weeks ago. I love what New Jersey is demanding of our schools, and I love the way it's being implemented here. Is there an opportunity for anything like this in other, in other categories as well?
So for ELA, over the past three years, under the leadership of Elizabeth Veneziano, who's with us today, and Beatrice Hanrady, our supervisors at the secondary and elementary respectively, they've assembled committees and teams to do an audit of the ELA texts, how we're using the genre, is our novels, and all of the readers, right? And they did report out to the Board at that time. And so then we feel that we've done a very comprehensive audit of our ELA curriculum and our texts, and how we're allowing our students to really see themselves, mirror window, in those. We can consider that for the other areas, i.e. math. We can think about that, especially now at elementary, as we're moving to reconsider our program.
Thank you. Yeah, I didn't mean to suggest that as a requirement, but really just curious about what's available to different departments. And then one other question that I was curious about was with regards to assessments. It seemed to me that the comment about assessments was geared towards setting us up to have actionable data. I wanted to make sure if I'm understanding that correctly. Is that really where that statement comes from and what the intent is?
Sure, absolutely. We feel that, if you notice, that our last state assessment presentation, we were able to, with greater degree of accuracy, report out on ELA and math, social studies and science. Science, yes, because they're tested in grades four and eight, but not social studies. But it's still a core area. And so then we would like to, with fidelity, be able to have data to report out every year. And so then this would make for a good baseline year for us to say, this is how our students are engaging with the content. Here are assessments that we're building that will measure to the degree with which they are meeting those standards, and then to the Board, hopefully in 2023, 24, include social studies in our assessment presentation. So it would be ELA, math, science, and social studies, and achieve all of the content core.
That's really great. Thank you so much. I know the district and the Board is very focused on student achievement, and I just feel like everything you're describing helps set us up for progress. So thank you.
You really did a great job. You really did, and I think the transparency was the key word tonight. I mean, certainly, Mike, your vision is coming to a reality. And what I've said since the day that I started here, Ebony knows it is. We need to be transparent with everything that we do, good, bad, or indifferent, right? So once we figure out what that is, we figure out how to fix it, and that's how you ended tonight, right? What are we going to do to include those areas that really, that really help our diversity shine, right? And if there are areas that we are not doing a good job in, it's all about recovery and figuring out that they're there and not hiding it is key. So to the both of you, unless there's any other questions, thank you very much.
Not a question, but just a quick comment. Thank you for the presentation. It was great. And as the curriculum committee, we had an opportunity to see it beforehand. So I had plenty of questions then, so I'll save the audience from all that. But I was a member of the NJCSS when I was in the classrooms, so they're a great organization. I'm glad they could provide this service to the district. And I look forward to the revisions that we're gonna make, and I look forward to seeing that work over the next couple of years. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So on behalf of the Board, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Kristin Dunleavy on being selected as the Essex County Teacher of the Year. And also thank you to Ms. DeMendez and Mr. Michael Figurito. We appreciate your time putting this presentation together and sharing it with us all here tonight. And thank you, Dr. Shone, for gathering the presentations together this evening. I appreciate it. Do we have any committee reports this evening? So as we moved here, let's see. Next up is, we're gonna have questions on the public agenda items only, please. Any community member who would like to make comments or ask questions, you may come to the podium at this time. Please state your name, home address for the record, and begin your comments. Please limit yourself to three minutes. If anyone would like to share some comments, please do so.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see everybody. Jay Wett, ELA teacher for almost 30 years at Roosevelt Middle School. And that's about how long I've known Hayden Moore, actually. Very early on in my career here in West Orange, I was the baseball coach at Roosevelt. I had to give that up to make time to become the school newspaper advisor, and it was Hayden who wound up taking my team. I remember meeting him outside the sixth-grade entrance at Roosevelt, back when Roosevelt had a sixth-grade entrance. And we talked for about 30 minutes. In that short amount of time, I already knew I had left my boys in good hands. Hayden assured me he would continue winning the Mayor's Trophy Cup and not allow Edison to take it. And he was a man of his word. Hayden Moore proved to me almost 25 years ago that not only did he talk the talk, but he walked the walk. Flash forward just a couple of years later, and I'm marrying the love of my life and my colleague, Marie Corvelli. West Orange Public Schools are a great place to work. For Marie, I wrote and illustrated a children's book entitled, When the Moon Was Lost in Love. In it, I alluded to the fact that sometimes the very thing you were looking for is right in front of you. Why do I bring this up? Because the Board was in the same exact position I was over 20 years ago. You found right smack in front of you exactly what you were looking for. And how would I know that in terms of a superintendent? Well, I cut my teeth here in the West Orange Public Schools at a time that most of us would consider its golden era. The town and its schools were becoming the remarkably successful and diverse entities that they are now, with the district under the direction of a man who has become nothing short of a legend, actually. Rising up from the ranks, becoming the principal of the high school, and then the district's longest-running superintendent. Those were the days, let me tell you. A simpler time and a happier time. Now, with your wise decision, you are displaying the sagacity that Jerry Tarnoff is well-known for. And I want to thank you for having the insight and the pedagogical acumen to make the decision that you have. I look forward to the district's next golden era, under the direction of Superintendent Moore. And I can't remember the last time I was this excited to start out a new school year. The only question I have is this. Were you gonna find at the high school a cafeteria to name after him? Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay, we'll move on. So moving on to our resolutions. May I have a motion to approve the Personnel Items A-1 through A-7?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Before we have any, I ask for any comments from the Board. I just want to congratulate our two retirees this evening. We have Robyn Sweeney, and we want to just thank her for 22 and a half years of service to the West Orange students and our school community. Best wishes to you on behalf of the Board of Education. And additionally, I would like to congratulate Gordana Mirak, a night custodian at West Orange High School, on her retirement after 22 years of service to the district. The Board wishes these women all the best as they move to the Everyday is Saturday Club. So congratulations. Any discussion from the Board member on Personnel Items A-1 through A-7? No? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mrs. Huerta? Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the curriculum and instruction item B-1?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. Second?
Seconded.
Thank you, Vice President Rothstein. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Tony Cliff? Excuse me, Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
Good while since you've done that. President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flowers. May I have a motion to approve the Finance Items C, Special Services Items 1 through 8, and Business Office Items 1 through 6?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. A second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Flowers, please take the roll call.
Mrs. Huerta?
Yes.
Mr. Rock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Vice President Rothstein?
Yes.
President Tony Cliff?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. And that concludes the resolutions for this evening. Thank you to all my Board colleagues. Next up, we have petitions and hearings of citizens on agenda or non-agenda items that you wish to discuss. Again, you'll have three minutes to speak. If you could state your name and address for the record. Anyone who has something they would like to say may come to the lectern now. Okay. Seeing none. Would like to thank you all for being here tonight, both in person and those of you at home. Our next regular board meeting will be held at 7:30 PM, September 19th, 2022. This meeting will be held right here in the West Orange High School Library Media Center. We will not be going back into executive session after the close of this meeting. There will be no further business discussed, and no additional action will be taken. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is now adjourned.